... Swanen County Board of County Commissioners, special call to emergency meeting. This morning I've asked Eric Musgrove to open this again.
Our Father in Heaven, we come today to thank you for the wonderful blessings you've given to us. We thank you for this time that we have together to conduct the business of the county. We pray that the commissioners will look to you for guidance and make those choices which will bring honor and glory to you. Thank you for the new year that we've had. Pray for many more. Pray you'll watch over the men and women of our military and also of our first responders. Keep them safe and return them safely homeless if their missions are accomplished. Your sons and daughters pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just remembered.
But it's over, so.
I think we might be.
There is some shady stuff.
I know you are.
First item on the agenda is discuss possible board action approval of task order with North Florida Professional Services for construction engineering inspection services associated with US 129 Turn Lane Project. Presenting would be Randy Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a project we've been waiting on for a long time. We are ready to start construction. There was a pre-construction meeting Thursday of last week. There was Representative of DOT in the meeting. On Friday, there was a series of emails that went out indicating that they desired that we have a different engineer handle the inspections. There isn't anything unusual about that. That's a new rule that came out with a couple of years ago where even your scrapping, SCOP and SIGP programs, projects, they want to engineer different than the design engineer handling the inspections. Because this was an older project that was in place prior to that new rule that came out a couple of years ago. It was anticipated that they would allow us to continue with the project under the old rule, but they didn't. So, we had to scramble then because this project has to begin right away. That was the reason for calling this emergency meeting. Was to go ahead and enter into a task order with North Florida Professional Services to handle the inspections. Dewberry started with Preble Risch, then Dewberry handled the design work on this project. We get a credit back from Dewberry, a little over $76,000. Mr. Bailey didn't know it. He left a little bit of money on the table. He's charging a 73-plus for the inspections. But I always tell him I want a good deal for the county, not for him. In any event, I just would request that the board go ahead and approve the task orders so we can get the project started right away.
Any questions? Any concerns?
All of this is funded by DOT.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Commissioner Fleming.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Sessions. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye. Moving on to item two, discuss possible board action, emergency repair to dragline. Randy Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the dragline is down right now. It isn't operating. We've got to perform some repairs. In layman's terms, I'll say that it's associated, these repairs are associated with the turntable where that large dragline is spinning on the base with the tracks. But before I get to the actual request, I want to speak to some of the history associated with this dragline because some commissioners, in fact, every time we have an election, believe it or not, while we have multi-million dollar issues we're wrestling with countywide, you've got two or three people that want to lead candidates to the belief that the greatest issue in Swanen County is the dragline in our mine in Branford. So, I want to speak to the history here a little bit. When I got here a little over seven years ago and started taking the tour of the whole county through the departments and all of our operations, I realized that the Branford Mine wasn't being run properly. And it wasn't for lack of desire of your employees, it was because we didn't have the right equipment down there. The mine in Branford, for years, the top rock had already been mined out. There was a very small sliver of top rock that was still there. And what I mean by that is that in the mining business, you've got underwater rock and you've got above water rock. So, the top rock was already gone before I got here. And what had happened a couple of years before I arrived was the county made a decision to purchase an excavator with what we call a long stick to try to dig underwater rock. Well, there's a problem with that. That long stick only gave them about 22 feet in depth that they could dig, and that is if they drove the machine right out to the edge of the water. And if you're familiar with the way excavators dig, they dig out as far as they can, and then as they get closer, they end up digging right down next to the machine. So, you literally had this machine sitting on the edge of a cliff, which is incredibly dangerous. And we almost lost the thing a couple of times, even after I got here, with men trying to dig as much rock as they could. With underwater rock, you can dig at least 50 feet deep. And we were digging about 22 feet deep at the most. The other problem with it is that you're not able to go back then and capture that balance of rock that you left underwater. And we are paying, our lease agreement with the owners of that mine, they're charging us for the cubic yards of rock per acre out there. So, we've been throwing money away, had been throwing money away for years and would have continued doing so. So, I spoke to the commissioners in a workshop and said, "Listen, we've got to have a dragline." And I did not recommend buying a new dragline. So, the board had established a price tag of $500,000. They said, "Go out and find a dragline." So, we did. We were searching all over the country. And I'll just tell you that there's an international market for old draglines. They ship them all over the world from this country. They'll take them apart, put them on ships, and get them out of here and reassemble them. But we found one down near Lakeland. Mr. Johns and I drove down, looked at it, spent a whole day down there, took our own dragline mechanic down there, went through all the operations with it. It worked perfect. It was in great shape. Price tag was $500,000. We came back here and discussed it with the board. Board approved purchasing the thing, but there was one county commissioner at the time that got in a dispute with another county commissioner on the board and decided that he was going to torpedo that dragline. So, he called the man, and the owner of the dragline told me personally what happened. He called him and spoke to him for half an hour and convinced him to not sell it to the county. So, he sold it to someone else. So, we started the whole process over again. Some people would call that politics. I'm not sure what you want to call it, but in any event, it would have been a great deal for us, and it would probably, even at 500,000, would have been cheaper because of the transportation expense and reassembly and the condition of the machine. So, later, we found one in Texas. The price tag was $170,000. Flew a couple of people out there to evaluate it, ran real well, was in great shape. With the transportation expense and reassembly and all, the price tag was 215,000, and we started that process. That company that was handling the transport and reassembly didn't complete the project. We had to hire someone else to help get it finished. But nonetheless, we got it here and got it reassembled. And amidst a year's worth of criticisms from someone that lived in Branford, it wasn't going to start. The motor was no good. It would never run. It was a piece of garbage. All of that campaign rhetoric. But they reassembled the dragline, fired it up, and it worked great. MSHA required us to do some improvements to it to get the noise level down. We had to make some modifications to it. And since that time, we've had various repairs that occur from time to time on what we call wear items. Now, the significance of that term, wear items, is that even brand-new machines, brand-new draglines, have wear items. And for the most part, that's what we have been repairing over the years as we have used that piece of equipment, and we'll continue to have those types of repairs going forward, as do every dragline that's operating in a mine today. At one point, while we were shopping and evaluating draglines, Mr. Johns and I were invited to go up to PCS and look at a brand-new machine. This brand-new dragline had a 1 and 1/4 yard bucket on it. The price tag was over $1 million with a little 1 and 1/4 yard bucket. That was the largest bucket that machine would even handle. It was over $1 million for that machine. The machine that we have today has a 6 and 1/2 yard bucket. We're moving a whole lot more rock. And I haven't tried to price new draglines that are that size, but I would venture that they're probably in the neighborhood of $5 million or more. So, we've got a great machine down there. It runs every single day, with the exception of the few times that it goes down where we have to replace these wear items. But there is nothing, like I said, and I want to emphasize uncommon, about having to replace wear items on a large piece of equipment like that. We perform repairs on our dump trucks, on our tractors, on everything that we're out there running all day, every day. Every piece of heavy equipment has repairs, even the excavator. One difference, obviously, with a machine this size is the price of the parts, the type of labor it takes to repair these. On occasion, you have to have a crane help take them apart in order to put them back together. And the outline that you have before you, Berry Green and Associates is a company. There are about three companies that we routinely have conversations with when we have a need for repairs. And the reason they're so few is because so few will go to the great lengths that are required to ensure that they have adequate parts for these machines. This machine is probably 60 years old or older, and it's difficult to find parts. So, what happens, a lot of these companies will purchase used draglines, disassemble them, rebuild the parts, and then make those available. So, that's where a lot of that inventory is. And it's all over the country, and we talk to these companies all the time. This particular company has the parts available. You may note in the backup material that they're going to have to disassemble the thing. The county will have to rent a crane. They've already located a crane to facilitate the disassembly. They believe that they've included all of the parts that are going to be required, but they said clearly that when they take it apart, there may be something additional. I'm asking the board to authorize us to go ahead and enter into an agreement with them to have these repairs taken care of and authorize me to work with them if additional parts are needed and labor to complete the job so that we can get this machine back up and running. My requests are that you allow me to order the repairs from Berry Green and Associates as a sole source due to the immediate availability of parts and their ability to get on this machine and get it repaired. The second thing is to authorize us to order the additional repairs if needed after disassembly, and then authorize the rental of the crane to facilitate the repairs. This is the type of thing that, and I believe I've handled this as an emergency item on previous occasions. As you know, your typical emergency procurements do not require us to come to the board and get permission ahead of time. We can inform you, you know, myself working with the chairman, we can come back and inform the board after the fact. But I felt like because we were calling an emergency meeting for this task order, we'd go ahead and let you know right now and let you participate in the decision. In any event, this is typically the way we have to handle this dragline, though, because it literally moves mountains of lime rock down there. And if you've been by there, you've got a significant amount of rock piled up there, but that's what it's taking to try to keep pace with these chip seal roads that we're out here trying to construct right now and keep up with our routine maintenance on unpaved roads in the county. So, it's imperative that we get this thing back up and running.
I have a few questions. How old is the dragline? How long we had now? About five years? Four, five years? Four, five?
It was January or February of 2012 when we entered into that initial agreement on the purchase, and it took over a year to get it all, by the time they had to take it all apart, ship it here, reassemble it, get it up and running, satisfy MSHA, it was probably, I'd say, a year and a half, maybe close to two years before it was really up and running good. So, it's been running probably a good four years.
How often do we have to do repairs on it? You know, I know with the rolling parts, I know that it's going to wear and tear. I know it's going to have that wear and tear.
Maybe once or twice a year, but some of the repairs are barely insignificant. There's some of the, I don't know how to describe this in layman's terms, the drive chain on the tracks, for instance, that machine is so enormous and heavy that when they move it, if you move it very far, they'll stretch and pop some things. They have to go back down there and replace those. Sometimes you have to do that every time you move it. If you move it 300 or 400 yards, you may have to repair a drive chain on the.
The same company coming, your mechanics out there do it?
No, our people don't do it. Well, I say this. Our employees perform certain routine functions on that machine so far as service and repair. The large item, very large items that have these unique parts that we don't have, we have to pay companies to handle that for us. Brake pads, for instance, some of those types of things, you know, those things are enormous, and they have to, it's a massive undertaking to take those things apart. And I'm talking about the brakes on the drums that move those big cables. So, but we've got a pretty good relationship with the companies, and we're familiar now with the companies that actually have these parts. We've been in the business long enough now to have business relationships enough of them that we know who to call and who can provide most of the parts that we need.
Chairman, I have a question.
We've had the same four years. Do we have an average cost of repairs on a yearly basis that we can get budgeted in?
Well, I think that I, what I, I don't have a line that says dragline repairs.
You ought to, it sounds like.
Well, no, and the reason I don't is because I have a line that has in-house repairs because we have lots of equipment. This is one piece of equipment, one of many pieces of equipment that we're operating every year, so we budget for repairs. And some of those are handled in-house, and others, you know, we have equipment that we send to Lake City on a regular basis to be repaired. But that's just a part of being in the business. I will say this, what we pay in repairs is nothing compared to the value of the rock that we're taking from that mine. This is a de minimis expense, and anyone that says otherwise has no idea about the operations of mines and what it costs to be in the mining business. In fact, I'll say this, before we purchased this mine, we went over to the Beavers Mines and looked at equipment that they had. And they have extra draglines sitting around, and they take parts off of them and try to keep theirs running. In fact, they had the same dragline down there, and we had a long conversation with them about that. We were told right up front, and I knew, in fact, let me just tell you. I came from a county that has 20, 30, 40 mines. I'd been around this stuff forever. That's why I knew when I got here and I saw this little excavator sitting out there that someone didn't have a clue. In fact, I'll say this, I think that the reason we ended up with the excavator is because that's what Ring Power sold, honestly. Not because it was the right piece of equipment, but because that's what they sold. But this is nothing, there's nothing surprising or unexpected here with these repairs at all, and shouldn't be. There isn't for anyone who's in this business. They anticipate every year that they're going to be repairing their dragline. That's just a part of doing business.
Well, it's moving parts, and I know they got tear down.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it. I don't, if that's the price of new, if the alternative is to spend millions of dollars on a new dragline that's got to be repaired anyway, time to time, I don't care if we have a steam-powered dragline out there. If it does the same work we do, we do the work. And I'm glad to have that. I don't have a problem with spending the money to get the thing repaired, get it up and running, because we've got a lot of work that needs to be done. And I just wanted to know if there was a way moving forward that we could budget this, these repairs, some of these repairs in so that we don't have to call the special meetings to get these things done?
It wasn't, the special meeting wasn't called for the purpose of doing the repairs.
It was called for the task order.
It wasn't because of the money. We've got the money and the budget. I've got the money and the budget, so it wasn't called for that purpose. The emergency procurement is what your procurement policies allow for. Just like I said, I didn't have to bring this to this meeting. The chairman and I could have had a conversation, and I'd have just gone on out there and done it. But because I was calling a meeting for the task order, it was a good opportunity for us to have this discussion. Otherwise, it would have just shown up as an information item later. So, we've got the money and the budget, and we'll go ahead and order the repairs. Yes, sir.
I've got one question. So, over the last four years of operation, you got a, do you have a, an average of what we've spent, pretty much, a year?
I've got totals in a file. I have an average, and I couldn't even begin to tell you. Some of these repairs may be 30,000. They may be 60,000. We don't have very many 60,000 repairs. They're going to range from, they may be 5,000. But I've got the records on it, and I can pull them all together.
Well, just looking at it, based on a small dragline versus a 6 and 1/2 yard bucket dragline, you know, if we can continue to keep this thing working, and let's just say it's a $3 million machine that would be a 6 and 1/2 yard, we got it for a tenth of the price basically right now, and the bucket is 77% bigger than what a $1 million one would be, which, you know, every time you scoop it, you're getting a lot more out of the ground. So, when I was in the fertilizer business, you know, I ordered machines that had bigger buckets so you hit the pile less times, and you save fuel and things like that. So, the fact that we got a 6 and 1/2 yard bucket, that's a good thing. If we can keep this thing working for another five or six or eight years, I think we're better off than trying to go out and buy something that's at least $3 million. And I understand there's wear on things, too, but I was just wondering if you had a file where, which you do, I just, I just thought maybe off the top of your head, you know how much we'd spent over the last four years, so.
Not off the top of my head. I can get the numbers for you. I will say this, though. It's my opinion, without even looking at that file, that we are able to mine more rock. We're mining more rock today, a sufficient amount of rock, to totally cover the cost of any repairs that we're making annually, because we're still paying for that rock, even though we were leaving it underwater before with that excavator. So, for all those years that they were trying to do this with an excavator, the county was throwing away 40, 50, 60,000 worth of rock every year that they can't go back and retrieve now.
And the excavator had what size bucket on it, probably? Maybe a yard?
Oh, it was probably less than that.
Probably less than a yard, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's a little tiny bucket, so they were just wearing that machine out trying to dig, you know, these little tiny spoonfuls of lime rock. The worst part of it, though, for me, was that it was incredibly dangerous.
Yeah, because you're digging underneath, you're digging under your tracks when you're bringing it up close.
That's right. You bring, that bucket comes right up under that machine as they're trying to dig straight down. And we literally almost lost a man and a machine out there one day trying to dig that rock in that fashion.
I got one quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The swing shaft, good use when 6,500, rebuilt is 9,900. Is there any warranty on the rebuilt? Is there any incentive to go that way? Any extra parts, bearing seals, gaskets that may come with a rebuilt shaft versus the used one?
I'm not planning to use the used one. I'm planning to order the rebuilt one. Our experience has been pretty good with these guys that deal in these parts. These companies, you know, you're going to, I'm sure every state has the same thing that we have. You're going to find a half a dozen of these companies in every state where you've got mining operations, where they do their best to make sure they've got all the parts, and they rebuild them. And they do a real good job with them. You know, they send them to these machine shops, and they work on these things, and they rebuild them, and they hold up pretty well. I mean, I'd love to have brand-new parts every time we take this.
No, I just wanted to make sure we was not using the used one, because unfortunately, you just don't know if you're getting, unless it's the last resort, the last thing out there.
It would be a rebuilt one. In fact, if the board wants to go ahead and, you know, some of these parts, I would prefer having the new ones, especially on this turntable where this thing's spinning. If you allow me to just get the new ones, I'll do that. But I think it was 15,000 or something for the new one. Is that what's on that list? 15,000 or 15,500?
What about the crane? How much does the crane cost?
Yes, 15,000 to 15,000.
The crane, we've been quoted $150 an hour, and there's a minimum of four hours. We're going to have to have it out there at least two different days because they'll come out and they'll take it apart. We have to coordinate this with the company coming here, you know, with their people to work on this assembly. But the first day, they'll get it all taken apart, set everything off to the side. The crane will leave. Those men will do all the repairs, and then they'll come back and lift everything back up and reassemble it. So, we'll have it at least two separate days. And this is the same thing we had to do before when the reassembly of the, in fact, we had to rent a crane to unload all of this, you know, the various parts. I can't remember how many semis it took to get this dragline here. So, we rented a crane to take it off the trailers and lay it out all over the place, and then we had to rent a crane to reassemble it.
So, what's the wishes of the board on the, on the new, used, or the rebuilt?
I would say that my limited knowledge of mechanics would be the parts are, the parts that feel like are going to be the most worn or the most easiest to come apart and to break in future, that they would be new. We're not dealing with rebuilt. I know rebuilt can be. They have weak, they could have weak spots in them, but new don't. On the other hand, you really don't know until you get one right.
That's true.
But the rest of it, I mean, it's $15,000 shaft.
Is there warranty on the new shaft? Well, that's really what it comes down to, because there's a lot of.
I don't expect the new shaft to be a problem. I don't, I haven't spoken to them about warranty, but honestly, that thing could be there for many years to come before it is an issue again, is what I would anticipate. Again, we're dealing with a machine that, I was trying to remember now, it's 60 or 70 years old. And I don't have any doubt that some of the parts are the original parts. I mean, these things hold up pretty well. For what they, I mean, if you stand out there and watch these draglines very long, you realize these things are under incredible stress, every part on those things. So, they hold up extremely well. Those parts are manufactured with really hard steel. If you ask for my recommendation, I'd say buy the new one. You know, the difficulty here is tearing the thing apart, putting it back together. That's where your expense is. These parts, in my opinion, are not that expensive, even the brand-new one, at 15,000. I'll tell you, on a dragline bucket, to find one in really great shape, they're about $15,000. We bought a rebuilt one. I think we purchased maybe two rebuilt ones now. I think we paid, highest was probably 7,000, something like that.
Didn't one come extra with that one?
Right. We had, yeah, there were two buckets. So, you know, when we're buying these things, we shop parts when we can. Cable, you know, as part of these annual expenses, we have cables from time to time, and one of those can get frayed, and then it becomes dangerous, so we go ahead and replace them. That's a massive undertaking to replace a cable, but it's a wear item. Doesn't have anything to do with the age of that machine, because we put brand-new cables on it shortly after we got it. But they just, we're under a lot of stress.
Yeah.
Question.
Yes, sir.
On the, on the email, he referenced 12,000 for the labor hotels much, and then 17,000 if he could use, get a used swing shaft. But up in the paragraph that he deals with the swing shaft, he's got three prices, 6,500 for good use, 9,900 for rebuilt, which is underlined by, I guess I would assume.
I did that.
Or 15,250. So, the 32,000, I'm sorry, the 20, I'm going to add, 29,000 that were figured in, is that figured in on the 6,500, or is that figured in on the 15, on the 9,900?
Well, if you give me a second, I can tell you. I don't remember now, to be honest with you.
Because there's obviously more parts in there that included in that.
But suffice it to say that if you. But suffice it to say that if you allow me to get the new one, it'll be whatever the price is. He's given us the best visibility, the quotes on these things, of everything. Yeah, this new phone, I can't find my calculator.
Thank you.
I think this phone was a prop for the movie The Exorcist. I'm not sure yet. This new phone just doesn't like me much. I can't tell you.
We did reference good used. And good used up here was 6,500, so I have to assume that that's the 6,500, that's the price.
It definitely was not the 6,500 because I had, at the time, when I had my initial conversations, I told them at the very least it would be the rebuilt one at 9,900.
We're looking basically at a difference of about...
About $5,000 or more.
And this, all of this that we're looking for is including the roller bearings and the roller assembly of the bearings that was recommended from before?
Yeah. Until the covers and drum are set and removed, complete and final parts needed list cannot be prepared since many of the bearing seals and associated gearing cannot be seen without removal. They have included everything that they can see and that they're fairly confident is going to have to be replaced. And I have our people down there at the same time. They're working with them as this thing comes apart. We don't turn them loose to just go down there and do things without us there. I'll have people there the whole time.
They'll get a crane rental.
Observing. My guys are getting pretty good about recognizing various parts that they've seen through the repairs, while the repair's been done over the years. They'll be down there at the same time.
Roughly, we're looking at 12,000, $12,000 today on the crane and the, about 42,000, 43,000 dollars in the labor.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Does that sound about right?
You know, I knew you got something, I'm sure. Could be. Could be. I mean, I don't want to be disingenuous. You know, we could have a $50,000 repair here. I just know that once they tear it apart, we're going to have to do whatever it takes to...
You won't know until you actually get it repaired.
Based on the information he's given right here, that's where we're at. Understanding that it could go up.
I should have asked Commissioner Fleming to present this for me because he's torn down a lot of motors and transmissions, and he knows there are a lot of unexpected things that show up. But the reality is, commissioners, I want to emphasize, we got a great deal on this machine. It has served us extremely well in the few years that we've been operating it. We will always have what I'll call routine repairs on wear items. It could cost us $30,000 or $50,000 a year. It's still a drop in the bucket for the amount of rock that we're pulling out of that mine that we couldn't pull out before. And it's a shame that we can't go back and retrieve what was lost out there trying to dig with the wrong piece of equipment before.
All right. What's the wishes of the board? I'll go and tell you. I think the new piece of equipment is the best way to go for me. It seems to be that the, the...
I agree too.
The new, the parts, about the cheapest part of the whole equation. So we might as well go with the new one. If you don't have any more questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Something is required. Procedurally, if we can do this again in two steps. One, declaring because of the urgency situation of it being down so we can utilize the sole source of Berry Green.
So they need to declare them a sole source?
Sole source first, and then, secondly, authorize the repairs and authorize Mr. Harris to, you know, move...
That's actually number one on your requested action.
I have a motion to authorize an order of repairs from Berry Green and Associates as a sole source due to immediate availability of parts and ability to perform services.
Make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Authorize county administrator to order additional repairs if needed following disassembly. They'll have a motion to approve.
Right, second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any discussion? Any none, all in favor, say aye.
I'm sorry. I was drinking when you said that.
And the last, authorize crane, rental of crane to facilitate repairs. Have a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Sessions.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Richardson.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, this is another one where, you know, we're going to call all of the companies, but we've already realized these cranes are scheduled out sometimes many, many weeks in advance. And we've already discovered that. So I can't tell you what the name of the company will be, but be assured that I will need for it to be considered a sole source, one that we can find that can get the job done when we need it done while we're trying to coordinate this with the, with the Green and Associates as well.
All right. Does that need to be included in the...
I don't think so because of the, how...
The dollar amount?
Totem, the dollar amount, you don't need to worry about it.
Okay. All right, got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Anything else to do with the crane or any other business?
Oh, sir, I've got about two hours' worth of stuff I'd like to discuss with y'all, but I won't do that today.
We'll spread it out.
We'll spread it out.
No further business? Anybody have any comments from the public they wish to make?
Oh, let me make one other comment real quick if I could. I'm sorry. I'll be back in touch with all of you very soon about a groundbreaking out here at the rail spur. We'll contact the paper as well. And Mr. Coke is going to be there with Fox News. He'll be the commentator for them on that day. But in any event, this has been a project that's been years in the making. Quick update, contract, I'm waiting for that to come back from the contractor with the bonds. They're going to hand-deliver that contract to me hopefully within the next couple of days and record their bonds when they get here. And then we'll go ahead and issue the notice to proceed. So sometime shortly thereafter, we'll schedule a groundbreaking out there so that we can get that thing underway.
Sounds good. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Any commissioners got any comments they want to make? If not, just need a motion to adjourn.
Make it adjourn.
Second.
Thank y'all.